We'll call this Prince William County School Board to order. And pursuant to Virginia Code 2.23708.2 and the School Board Policy 139, School Board participation in meetings by electronic communication, school board member Diane Ralston will participate in the meeting through electronic means due to medical condition that prevents her in-person participation. The motion is in order for the approval of the closed session agenda. Ms. Zargarpur.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jessie of the Okaquan District, seconds.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Join the meeting, folks. Oh, Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
I haven't seen anything pop up.
Mine didn't pop up yet.
Okay. So I'm just, I got two now.
So seeing no opposition, we'll move to the next motion. A motion to enter closed session is in order. Ms. Zargarpur.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711 and 2.2-3712, the Prince William County School Board enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss with the superintendent and staff the appointment, transfer, release, assignment, and promotion of specific employees, and to receive advice on related legal issues as provided by Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A1 and 8. Two, to discuss with staff and consult with legal counsel regarding requests for religious exemptions pertaining to specific students under, as provided by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A2 and 8. Three, to consult with legal counsel and actual, and staff, actual or probable litigation and specific legal matters involving staff and students as provided by Sections 2.2-3711A1, 2, 7, and 8. Four, to consult with the superintendent and legal counsel regarding legal procedures relating to the conduct of school board meetings under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8. Five, to consult with the superintendent and legal counsel regarding the implementation of federal regulations under Title IX as provided by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8. Six, to receive information and discuss with staff and legal counsel the acquisition and sale of real property for school purposes, the discussion of which is in open session would negatively impact the school division's bargaining position as provided by Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A3 and 8. And seven, to receive information and to discuss with staff plans for the security of the Kelly Leadership Center and other school facilities and the safety of persons using those facilities as provided by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A19.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Wall seconds motion. Any discussion? Please vote. And as she tabulating votes, just to clarify for public sake, the first motion on the agenda did pass unanimously with no objections. And Ms. Ralston, how do you vote on this one?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is seven yes, one absent Williams. Motion passed.
Okay, at this time, the Prince William County School Board will now enter closed session, return to open session approximately in one hour. Thank you.
3, 2021 be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such business matters, as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Moving on to the closed session action items. Ms. Zargarpur.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointments and releases of specific employees as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jackson.
Okay.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Moving on to 10.02, Ms. Zargarpur.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the request for religious exemption from compulsory school attendance in case number RE21-21.
Do I have a second? Ms. Jessie.
Second.
Ms. Jessie seconds motion. Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Great. Moving on, I'd like to call the meeting, the Prince William County School Board, to order. At this time, we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Flynn, if you would lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next, move on to the approval of the public meeting agenda. Motion is in order. Ms. Zargarpur.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Moving on to the adoption of the consent agenda. Motion's in order.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jessie. Or Ms. Williams, who, I'm sorry.
I would just like to thank my appointee to the CEET Committee, Mr. Jason Rock, for volunteering to participate on this committee.
Excellent. Ms. Zargarpur.
So I just want to make sure that people who brought it to my attention are aware that we did get the resolution. The last line changed, so it says that now therefore be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board and the superintendent of schools proclaim November 15 through the 19th, 2021, as American Education Week in Prince William County Schools, and recognize, especially during a pandemic, our school employees' selfless commitment to education and to our students.
And did we get a second on this motion? Right, we got a second. So that was a discussion? Please, please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Okay, great. Moving on to citizen comment time. Those citizens who signed up in advance with a clerk may address the school board this evening when they are called to the podium. The citizen comment period for regular school board meetings is limited to one hour with the first half hour reserved for comments on the agenda items only, and the second half hour for comments on agenda items or other topics, non-agenda items or other topics germane to the operations of the policies of the Prince William County Schools. Citizens signed up to speak on agenda items must speak to the agenda item they have identified or they'll be asked to step down. We have one speaker on agenda items and 10 on non-agenda items. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. Please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium. If you do not do so, you'll be asked to step aside when you are called to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. The first speaker will be Oveda Scott.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Mr. Chairman, Dr. McDade, my name is Oveda Scott, and my address is on file with the clerk. First, Dr. McDade, I would like to thank you for the virtual option given to staff yesterday. Those staff members who could take part in working virtually do appreciate the gesture. However, please be aware there were some administrators that pushed against this option, making staff members feel guilty and wanting the time to work virtually. Next, I would like to express my thanks to the board for recognizing American Education Week, which was created and sponsored by the National Education Association. As the theme of great public school, a basic right and our responsibility is being reflected during November the 15th through November the 19th, it truly fits the condition of education at this time during a pandemic. Please know that teachers don't have to reaffirm their commitment to educating our youth because it's evident by the readjustment of time, energy, and mental space that we have given since the beginning of this pandemic. Teachers who have stayed in this profession had endured the changes from traditional instruction to concurrent learning, a great deal of professional development, and more computer application programs. Some teachers have answered the call to provide the high doses tutoring to help motivate students, as shared last week, and I am one of them. If we are fully going to be vested in the statement of great schools being a basic right and our responsibility, then it starts at the top with leadership. Since our county is site-based management, then the efforts are placed on the school admin team. It is the admin that needs to be reminded of their responsibility as leaders during this time of crisis to inspire, motivate, and give support. This does not look like nasty emails in all caps, refusal of timely leave, or using the power of the pen to threaten the staff with performance improvement plan. This does not look like admin having meetings after meetings, abusing the duties as assigned in our contract, or unprofessional retaliation against staff. The affirmation needed from our admin team is empathy. I know every situation is different, but overall, staff is operating at a pace of burnt out. Our students are different this year. They must be retaught many necessary skills to get them not only on grade level, but how to behave socially and emotionally in a positive manner. In the words of author Brene Brown, empathy has no script. There is no right way or wrong way to do it. It's just simply listening, holding space without holding judgment, emotionally connecting, and communicating that incredibly healing message of, you're not alone. This is what we want for our admin during American Education Week. Just listen and hear us. Thank you.
Kimberly Stewart. And then after Kimberly Stewart, they can, if you come up to the front and have a seat if you'd like to be close to the mic. Kristen Gladhill, Jessica Newton, Stephen Amato. Ms. Kimberly Stewart first.
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Stewart, and my address is on file with the clerk. I am here to demand your attention and respect tonight while I speak. Last time I was here, too many of you found whatever was on your laptops and phones more important than listening to a concerned parent, educator, and mother who has had enough of your medical tyranny over parents and children in this district, and who is here to demand that you find a way to allow more parental involvement in our schools as our teachers are increasingly screaming for help. Their mental and emotional health matters, too. Tonight, I am demanding that you lift all the intrusive and overreaching restrictions to your current policies regarding parent volunteers and substitutes in our schools so that our teachers can access the support and assistance they need that parents can immediately provide inside of our schools. Our teachers are tired, burnt out, overworked, overstressed, and need parents to be able to come into school again and support the daily work our teachers, administrators, and staff provide our students every day. Mask mandates and vaccination requirements should not hinder any qualified and able parent to get back into our schools and support the work of our teachers. With growing class sizes, increasing demands, shifting expectations, shortages of substitutes, and shortages of teachers, it is vital that this board open our schools fully to allow parents back in to support our teachers and staff. I'm here to advocate tonight for both teachers and parents to come back together to provide a world-class education for our children that can be done safely without tyrannical medical requirements. I'm also here to thank you, this board, for not mandating our athletes to be vaccinated in order to compete this school year for winter and spring sports. I do commend you on listening to the parent concerns regarding this policy, and I urge you to continue to listen to parents and not mandate the vaccination on any of our students. Student athletes provide our schools with opportunities for greater achievement in the classroom, increased recognition, valuable character development, and improve upon healthy lifestyles for our children. Not mandating the vaccine on these incredible students is appreciated and should continue as a policy of this district. Medical choices like vaccination and masks should always be exactly that, a choice. This does not, I'm sorry, enough is enough, and we, the parents, are not going anywhere. This is our school district to build together moving forward. We, the parents, will continue to speak, and we, the parents, will be heard. Your job is to work with us, all educators, staff, and personnel, along with our students, to provide a world-class education. If you do not want to work with us and all your stakeholders, then I suggest you find another job next fall.
Kristen Gladhill.
Hey, I'm Kristen Gladhill. My address is on file. I'm a local mom of two. I'm here to say no to the vaccine mandates for our children. I'm not an anti-vaxer, I'm just an anti-mandate person. Our schools are not a place for medical care, and no school should be a vaccination site. We need to protect the rights of parents and respect their choice not to vaccinate their child. This is not a deadly virus for our children, and I'm sure you've all seen the numbers, I'm not going to repeat them here. Are you here to take this choice away from us, or are you willing to work with us? There is still too much unknown about the long-term risks regarding this vaccination for children, and the studies were not done with large enough groupings to know fully whether all of our questions have been answered regarding safety and efficacy of the vaccine of young children. The school district should not mandate this vaccine due to the high immunity of children naturally, as well as the potential risks that are still unknown. I personally have seen several preschools in Prince William County that followed the mask mandate with their two-year-olds and up, where all faculty was vaccinated, and they had outbreaks of RSV colds and even COVID, which wasn't even shocking. I won't take anyone, it won't take anyone here long to ask around or post in a few of the local mom groups on Facebook to find this information out. Classrooms were sent home to quarantine with masked children and fully vaccinated faculty, and I can learn this on ballet and playdates and all these things. How can we just overlook this, you know, these are facts, these are real things that are happening? So vaccination should be a choice that every parent and child makes in consultation with the doctor, and it should not be forced upon anyone. It should be, should not be conditioned to access a free public education in Prince William County. Some will argue, well, we've always had vaccinations for public schools, it's just another one, so kind of shut up about it. Well, we always have had these, but we've always had exemptions. So I know a lot of my friends in their 30s who are not fully vaccinated adults, but we still went to public school. Also, enough with the agenda that we know is deeply rooted in our school systems. Plenty of us know what's going on here, and we've said it 100 times before. Culturally responsive training, culturally proficiency training, whatever you guys want to call it, we know what it is. Having teachers in Virginia be paid, and we have friends that are teachers, so we can ask these things, having friends in Virginia that are paid to take online courses where slides titled Whiteness and Bold with a ton of craziness under it, asking questions, if a black boy and a white boy were walking late to class in the hall, which one would you stop first? This is what our teachers in Virginia are being asked right now. That's a problem. I mean, there's no right answer either, but. Presentation back in March where Maria D. Burgos shared a slide with all of this nonsense, then at the bottom in really tiny fine print read, adopted sources Minneapolis Fortress Press, colon, critical race theory today. So there I said it. The more the government and our school systems try to keep parents out and lie to, the more parents join us in this fight of tyranny. Don't gaslight us about teaching our kids racial essentialism and gender theory by calling us racist because it will backfire, as yesterday's election proved.
Jessica Newton.
Hello, I'm Jessica Newton from Gainesville, Virginia. So I'd also like to talk about vaccine mandates. Mandating a vaccine to get in schools is wrong for our children in so many ways. Hundreds of parents like myself are going to pull our kids out in defense of medical freedom. By the look of what happened at the polls yesterday, you know there's huge numbers of parents that will not allow our children to be part of a medical experiment. How can you move forward with a decision like this? I can tell you right now, we will 100% pull our kids out. How can you, in good faith, knowing that outcome, threaten the education and future of our children? How dare you threaten the parents of this county by considering mandating medical decisions in exchange for free public school education that we all deserve? Did you know that the CDC estimates that at a minimum, 40% of children in this age group, 5 to 11, have already had COVID? Does this vaccine offer any benefits to this group at all? And for children that have had the Delta variant, are you doing damage to their immunity by vaccinating them with a variant that's almost two years old? We don't know if that's going to help or hurt their current immunity. We don't know if it's going to help at all, and yet you're considering mandating it. Myocarditis, everyone knows, is a huge concern with regards to this vaccine and our children. Out of 800 and 900 cases that the CDC reported and looked into, they've only done two biopsies to try and see if there's any difference between regular myocarditis and vaccine-induced myocarditis. Did you know that most people who experience myocarditis, aside from the vaccine, are given about 10 years to live after its first occurrence? So why are we doing this? Our children deserve so much better than that, which is why we're here to stand up for them. And thank God, we have a governor now that will stand with the parents in defense of medical tyranny and against your incessant denial of pushing critical race theory, aka cultural competency training, culturally relevant training, equity, not equality, whatever you guys want to call it. Pushing this on our teachers and students in this county is insane, and everyone needs to just admit what they're doing, stop lying, let's talk about it, let's have some kind of town hall with parents and get some open discussion around this issue. In closing, I'd just like to say, let's go Brandon.
Stephen Amato.
I'm Stephen Amato. My address is on file. Good evening, Prince William County School Board members and fellow citizens. My comments and concerns focus on the 20 October 2021 School Board passage of the revision of Policy 738, nondiscrimination and harassment of students. Specifically, Section G 22-1, 23 dot 3 of the Code of Virginia requires implementation of the Virginia Department of Education model policies for the treatment of transgender students and Virginia's public schools. I'm not here to debate the decision of the board that night. However, in light of the Loudoun County, Virginia case where a 14-year-old who identified as a transgender student sexually assaulted two teenage girls, the Prince William County School Board should assess lessons learned from this case, and if the board legal counsel has not reviewed the case and the circumstances about this tragic crime, then the board needs to review the crime soonest. As a citizen with three children in the school system and a fourth within three years to enter into the school system, I am concerned. What assurances are there in which my two female children would not be assaulted by a transgender student? I ask, does the board have transparent guidance on a sexual assault or harassment on a student, by a student? Is it reported to a school official other than the victim's guardian? How and when is the victim's guardian notified? What are the protocols or processes if a student is the subject? Is the student suspended or reassigned to a different school? What are the board's protocols or processes to notify the victim's legal guardian of the information the board has? It would be extremely beneficial if the board is completely transparent on guidance and processes the school system implements when there is a student-to-student or Prince William County school employee-to-student assault. The victim, the legal guardians, and the entire family of that victim are dramatically affected by such an event. And I encourage the board, if those policies, those protocols are not transparent, please, please make them transparent. That will help ease us, parents, on this decision. Thank you for allowing me to comment.
Jennifer Rakowski, and after that will be Shital Bhut, then David Sunkel and Jessie Graham. Jennifer Rakowski.
Good evening, Dr. McDade and school board members. My name is Jennifer Rakowski. I reside in the Okaquan District. Regulation 562.01-1, Certified Personnel Planning Time. Number one reads, planning time for all teachers is essential to an effective instructional program. Therefore, under normal circumstances, time allocated for this purpose will be used for instructional planning. Based on discussions, social media posts, and other forms of communication, it sounds like planning time is not being used by certified staff. Instead, some schools are using PLCs or CLT meetings as a way to work around this. Instead of allowing teachers to have planning time for their own use, they are having these meetings to go over what they're doing, and they have to prep for these meetings. A few comments from teachers. It's like we're screaming that the kids are having social, emotional issues, and they're like, that's nice, but do you have your ICAN statements done or your objectives and modules? I literally have about 120 minutes of prep for the whole week, and when I miss prep, I feel unprepared for the rest of the day. We have to prepare for the PLC/CLT meetings by filling out a form, thus taking up more time of planning after hours. This past week, Monday and Tuesday, instead of teachers having more time to catch up on grading or allocating the time towards parent-teacher conferences, there was more professional development. I spent a lot of extra hours at work. For instance, I was there until 7:00. Why? Because the summative election project there was due 10 days earlier was still being turned in. When I went home, I had a dozen or so emails from kids turning in work. I still have 60 to grade of 140. Some have not been turned in. I emailed kids, where's your work? Crickets. I do this because I care that a zero on summative will fail them. I have many teacher friends in the same boat, and some of them have to do four hours of PD tomorrow, this was Monday or Tuesday, instead of grading. The quarter closed Friday, give us the courtesy of allowing us to finish grading. There should be no meetings, no PD of any kind. I am frazzled. I've been short with colleagues and students this last week. The school year is hard, the kids are struggling to reconnect. Teachers are being asked to do everything to level the field, and guess what? It's not humanly possible. Again, I'm stressing to the school board, the superintendent, the superintendent's staff, that your staff are burnt out. Staff are still having to use Canvas to create and update those lessons in case students are virtual. The other issue is tech. Teachers and TAs are the first line of defense for tech, which take a lot of time, and getting chargers to help them log in. Then there's all the behaviors on top of it, having to relearn, and the list goes on and on. Please look at the Regulation 562.01-1. Thank you for your time. I only had three minutes and tried to get it all in there. Thank you.
Shital Bhut.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Shital Bhad. My address is on file with the clerk. I stand in front of you today as a concerned mother, constituent, and member of this community. I am disgusted and growingly angered by the political agenda of this district to weave critical race theory here in the state of Virginia and in our schools. Critical race theory, racial practices, and equity disguised as segregation policies are present throughout the state, and we have seen and have examples of how this is slowly creeping into classroom instruction. According to the Virginia School Board Association, your job is to, I quote, maximize student achievement by taking a leadership role in education reform, end quote. This school board, our county leadership, and our schools are certainly introducing pieces and parts of it to our children through teacher trainings, equity statements, and classroom instruction. It is wrong, divisive, and it needs to be stopped at all levels. In regards to mask and gender policies, as a mother, I entrust the school system to educate my child in a safe and secure learning environment where she can thrive in her learning. Dr. Latania McDade or Dr. Latif are not my pediatricians. You get to make decisions about reading, writing, math, and budgets. It is my job alone as a parent to consult with our medical provider and God to make health decisions, not yours. You are not here to make these decisions. You have overstepped your boundaries, and we will not stand for it. If members of this school board keep pushing boundaries into the territory of parental decisions, you will lose students. It may be a wise idea to focus on the budget part of your job description. Schools should be looking for ways to provide Schools should be looking for ways to provide all students privacy needed for themselves in a safe space that is not intrusive on other students. Boys do not belong in girls' bathrooms, and girls do not belong in boys' bathrooms. It is common sense and should be policy to create an alternative gender-neutral space for all students to access for needed privacy that protects all students. As a concerned mother and constituent, I demand this Board immediately review its current policies on mask mandates in our school, the use of critical race theory in our teacher trainings and instructional materials, and that you listen to all parents and create an acceptable policy on gender identity in school restrooms and locker rooms in our county. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm David Sunkel. Pardon me, I'm David Sunkel. I live in Bristow, Virginia. I want to address mask mandates and vaccine mandates. Mandates are not born of law. The Constitution is the highest law in the land. Mandates are not enforceable by law. So by their very nature, they're not legal. And you're enforcing something when you go along with the current, I guess you would call it, an administration. What they're trying to do to force people to do things that are not lawful and are not backed by science is horrible. Dr. Peter McCullough is a cardiologist. He was chief of internal medicine at Baylor University, and he's the most published author in his field of medicine and the history in his field. And he has recently come out with five points about COVID-19, the Wuhan virus, is not spread asymptomatic. Fauci himself is on record saying so. Asymptomatic people should not be tested. That's point two. Point three, natural immunity is robust, complete, and durable. The Wuhan virus, no matter what variant, is easily treatable at home. Current Wuhan virus, so-called vaccines, they are not vaccines. They're experimental gene therapies that are under emergency use authorization that demand and require informed consent. Informed consent is impossible because there's no science to back up that it's safe. The CDC's own data makes it abundantly more than clear that this thing is not safe. To even consider it for children eighteen or under is criminal, and I literally mean criminal. And if you all support such a policy and a child is forced to take a vaccine and is harmed by it, I can promise you, I'm going to lead a legal army to hold every one of you accountable in a court of law. I'm just about out of time, so I'll have to cut it there.
Jesse Graham.
My daughter's actually going to speak for me because I got an email saying I wasn't speaking. She got an email saying she was, so I'm giving my time to my daughter.
Well, you guys both have time, so is that Maidsen Graham?
What? I got an email saying I was not.
Well, I got you guys both on the list, so you're happy to each of you speak as you wish. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Madison Graham, and I am a student at Patriot High School. I am here tonight to push to remove the mask mandate in our schools. Are you aware that in the U.S., over four thousand kids a year die in car accidents? That means students are at least fifteen times more likely to die in a car accident than from COVID-19. What are you going to do next? Ban us from riding the school bus every day or taking our cars to school every day? Did you know about a thousand kids a year die of drowning in the U.S.? Should we not be allowed near water without a life vest on? So far, since the start of the pandemic, there have been somewhere between three hundred and sixty-two and six hundred kids that have died from the virus. However, I cannot find a definitive number on this. That means between two hundred and forty and four hundred kids per year have died from COVID, which is a tragedy, and I don't want to minimize the death of any child, but I want to be realistic. Deaths do happen for a variety of reasons to kids. Should we force kids to wear these masks when the survival rate is ninety-nine-point-nine-nine-seven-three percent? COVID isn't even in the top ten causes of death for children in the U.S. It's actually much closer to the amount of deaths from the flu on an average year for children. You have been so focused on making us wear these masks. Has anyone actually read the two major mask studies? The Netherlands and Bangladesh have both done large studies showing no major difference between cloth masks and no masks at all. Yet, no one seems to care about the toll masks are taking on our mental health. The American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry and the Children's Hospital Association have both declared a national state of emergency in children's mental health. Suicide rates have increased drastically during the lockdowns in twenty-twenty by thirty-one percent and somehow have continued to rise in twenty-twenty-one by fifty-point-six percent. Don't you think these masks represent an irrational fear you have instilled in us? I've witnessed many of my friends and acquaintances slip into depression, not only through the lockdowns, but also since we've been back in school, where we are constantly told how dangerous life is, even though it's a major exaggeration. Thank you.
Mr. Graham, did you want to say anything? You do have three minutes. I'm not sure why you got the email, but...
Yes, I'll take a minute. I probably won't take all three. Jesse Graham, Bristow, Virginia. You can look at my address on file. Again, my daughter said most of what I would talk about. I can go a little more into the Bangladesh study. The Bangladesh study actually was three hundred and sixty thousand individuals were studied. A third of them were given N95 masks, a third were given cloth masks, and a third were mask-free. In the study, it proved the N95 masks did show about a ten to twelve percent increase or reduction of transmission. There was absolutely no difference between cloth masks and no masks. So every day, you guys send our kids to school with cloth masks. Most of these kids don't even wash their masks on a regular basis. You talk to, I talk to my daughters, I have twin girls. Most of those kids, at best, once a week, wash their masks. Florida Atlantic University did a study on how hazardous masks can be if they're worn on a regular basis without being washed or cleaned. So we're actually putting our kids at risk by sending them to school in these cloth masks every day. If you guys want to give them a brand-new mask when they walk in the door every single day and after they eat lunch every day, then maybe it would make a little bit of sense. But we're putting them in masks that don't fit them, that don't work right, and we expect this to make a difference? I mean, really? That's like putting kids in car seats that are, it'd be like putting a kid in a booster seat that's an infant. It makes no sense at all. You take a look at all of this, these kids, what's, I see it in my kids. They can't stand the idea of not seeing people's faces every day, seeing their teachers, seeing, it's not good for them. Suicide rates, depression, every mental health problem has skyrocketed through this thing. For what? For a disease that really has no effect on them? And I know most people say, well, we're protecting the teachers. The teachers are vaccinated. If we believe in this vaccination so much, then why are you so worried about the teachers at that point? Do what's right for the kids. That's what you guys are supposed to do, is do what's right for the children. They should be the number-one priority. That's all I have to say.
Good evening, Board members and Dr. McDade. I'm Shannon Garrity, and my address is on file. Think about this. We're not going to get new teachers if we don't take care of the ones we have, and you're going to lose those if you don't listen. You want high dosage tutoring during the school day, but we don't even have enough planning as it is. We're already doing the impossible. We're drowning, and you want us to do more. There is no time. Everyone in this room is looking for ways to improve student learning and address gaps that can't be met by an overworked and overwhelmed staff. All of the new ideas and programs roll down to us, teachers, assistants, ESPs. I'm not sure how many of our ideas actually make it to you, so I'm hoping you will listen to us now. See, we have to implement all these innovative programs, but we're asking ourselves, where do we find the time? The end of first quarter is a good time to reassess what is working and what is not. At this point, we have all been putting in an unsustainable number of hours, and many of us are still not getting it all done. It's having an unhealthy effect on all the teachers. So what can be done to gain time? You need to carve out time, and going back to flex for the high school schedule is the answer. It gives concrete hours that can be used for tutoring. I know there are issues with dual enrollment, but I don't believe those are insurmountable. The only play in the schedule is flex. It is something that helps everyone. Teachers can regroup. We can get things done. You can deliver the high dosage tutoring. Students can get extra help, work on assignments, or just take a mental health break. It's a win-win, and all it takes is a schedule change. It's not impossible, just a pain, and it can be done. Everyone I know, faculty and students, are talking about the positivity of flex. It will address remediation and fill in gaps for lost learning. This is doable. It will be appreciated because it gives us all what we need: time. Last year, our students had Mondays off, late starts every day, and no due dates. This year, they are struggling mentally and academically, and they are not alone. Think of it as triage on a population that needs a lifeline. Flex can be implemented now. We are good at connecting with our students, but we can't give our best if we're wiped out. I was short with my kids last week. It wasn't their fault, not entirely. And Saturday, I cried at Giant Food at the pharmacy. I'm worn out, and I'm not alone. Teachers have great ideas, but those are snuffed out before they reach the destination they need to arrive at, or they're voted down, dismissed, or watered down. Also, we need more than three minutes twice a month to be heard. As you can see, we need a place at the table. I'm willing to pull up a chair until it's permanent. Teachers can help, and we will speak truth. It won't be what you want to hear, but it will be real. As teachers, we should be able to directly influence this educational community. The access we have to decision-making is minimal at best. We want to speak without an intermediary so we know what gets through. It's about time to invite us in. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, are we moving? Oh, okay. Sixteen oh one, annual school calendar. Dr. McDade.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. Tonight, in preparation for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we will be sharing options for the school calendar, and it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Jennifer Casada, Director of Research and Accountability and Strategic Planning, and she will be sharing more information on our calendar selection process as well as options for consideration.
Thank you, Dr. McDade. Good evening, Chairman Latif, School Board members, and Dr. McDade. Tonight, I will present you with options for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year, as Dr. McDade said. By way of some background, our starting point for this next year's calendar options was our current calendar that you approved as a board back in October of two thousand twenty. By way of other background, it's important for us to note some requirements. Virginia requires that school divisions have one hundred and eighty days, nine hundred and ninety hours of instruction a school year. We can only go below that when we have an emergency situation. In addition, we had a change in the two thousand nineteen, twenty-twenty school year when Virginia removed the prohibition on school divisions guarding school before Labor Day without a waiver. School divisions can now start up to two weeks before Labor Day but must have that four-day Labor Day weekend as part of their calendar if they do so. Next, I'm going to describe the calendar development process. So we annually convene a calendar committee. This committee includes parents, students, teachers, central office staff, other staff representatives representing different associations. So as I mentioned, the starting point for this calendar was the current calendar. Other options were included for consideration that made some minor modifications. A virtual calendar meeting was held on September twentieth of this year. The calendar committee discussed these initial options, asked questions, and provided suggestions. The same committee was then asked for their feedback electronically in order to inform the executive cabinet. The executive cabinet then approved two options for consideration by the School Board. Once those two options were considered, input from the public has been gathered through a poll about these options. It's important to note that this year, the School Board did add some new holidays to the student calendar. And in September of this year, the governor had a task force that released a report, this task force, on the culturally-inclusive school meals and calendars, and the report recommended best practices regarding school calendars and religious observances. So Prince William County and some surrounding jurisdictions incorporate multiple religious and cultural observances as student holidays. This is one of the best practices. Our official calendar does not list these holidays by name, but our annual school guiding calendar publication lists these holidays as well as many other observances, some that are school holidays and some that are not. Other jurisdictions in the area and in the state include some of the religious observances as school days, but with rules excusing absences, limiting homework, and avoiding the scheduling of major events. The four holidays that were added to the school year this year, they were added to reflect the diversity of Prince William County Public Schools, and both calendar options for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three include these same holidays. These holidays include Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, Diwali, and Eid al-Fitr. In both proposed options for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, the winter break does incorporate the Christmas holiday, and the spring break incorporates Good Friday, Easter, and the beginning of Passover. Next, I'm going to show the calendar options at a glance. So the first thing that you see in italics is the current year calendar and then the two options. Option A very much mirrors the current year calendar, and option B includes minor changes, such as a slightly shorter winter break, an addition of an additional teacher workday at the end of the first semester, and then school actually ending one day earlier. This is a verbal summary of those same points of information. The start and end dates for students in both options, the start date would be August twenty-second of two thousand twenty-two, and the end date would be either June fourteenth in option B or fifteenth in option A. And the total number of days, as I mentioned, was one hundred and eighty. The key differences, option A mirrors the current calendar and includes a full two-week winter break. Option B is very similar, but includes a slightly shorter winter break, but an additional student holiday, as I mentioned, at the end of the first semester. These adjustments were made because these are some of the topics that are often discussed and considered by the calendar committee. As I mentioned, once the committee met and options were discussed, they were then asked to provide input via a feedback form afterwards, and eighteen of them responded. They were asked to rank the three options that were under consideration at that time. Option A, the one that parallels the current year, was ranked highest, followed by our current option B. There was a third option, but it was so far distant that it didn't make it out of committee. Committee members were also asked to identify their top two factors in considering what they wanted in a calendar. The highest priority was maintaining a two-week winter break. Other high priorities included ending school as early as possible in June, as well as keeping the holidays that were added this year. As I mentioned, we also conducted a public poll about the two options that are under consideration for right now. This poll was conducted in October, or three thousand seven hundred respondents completed the whole poll. The majority, strong majority, chose option A, again, the one that parallels this year. And you can see that that was seventy-nine percent, and that was pretty consistent across groups. Seventy-six percent of parents, eighty-four percent of staff, and eighty percent of students. Some key themes emerged from those who provided some suggested changes, and this was less than one-third of the respondents total providing any type of comment. So again, in keeping with themes we've heard before, folks like to end school as early as possible. We see a lot of comments about keeping a two-week winter break. There were some comments about reducing the number of holidays and days off in general within the school year so school can start later and end earlier. And there were some comments about setting spring break at a fixed time, the first week of April, which in the proposed calendar options is when spring break falls, even though that's not its typical fixed time. Those are the options that we have for you. The next steps in this process, the Board is scheduled to approve the calendar... The next steps in this process, the board is scheduled to approve the calendar on November 16th. At that point, the calendar is used, excuse me, to develop all of the employee calendars and will be published and available to the public. As of now, the board docs for this meeting and the next one do have both calendar options in graphical format as well as this presentation. Thank you very much.
Excellent. So this was the first presentation. We'll be bringing this back at the next board meeting to vote on. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Casada? Okay, Ms. Williams?
Dr. Casada, could you tell us, so the school calendar committee that's made up of, like, generally whom?
It includes parent representatives, there were students, there are teacher representatives, other staff association representatives, and HR representatives. Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Wall?
In these two calendar options, do we have the same number of teacher workdays built in? Or is there...I guess one of them said there was an additional teacher workday.
Option B builds another one, additional one during the actual school year, yes, at the end of the first semester to have two days off, which parallels the end of the first quarter.
And then, is there pretty much a teacher workday after each quarter?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Mr. Wilk?
Yeah, one thing came up since we last spoke with some of the consulting work I do. I know particularly, like, the state of Indiana has adopted what we call e-learning days. They're primarily meant for asynchronous instruction and meant to give teachers a little bit more bandwidth and time. For example, the kids logging the Canvas to their work, there might be some office hours towards the end of the day, but that gives teachers the ability to use that day to have faculty meetings or staff meetings. So for the normal school day, their planning isn't possibly taken away as a result of some of that stuff. If we were to do something like that, would that count towards instructional minutes to put something like that on a calendar for consideration? Like, to put an e-learning primarily asynchronous day for the purpose of, like, different, you know, bandwidth of teachers, just, you know, the workload and stuff to give them time, potentially to catch up by having modules that many of them have already spent a lot of time and built on Canvas, but making it primarily, like, in asynchronous every now and then, again, to give teachers some time to do more additional work and support for the planning purposes?
What I can speak to right now, Mr. Wilk, is what the state has in place for this year, and they're not any further ahead of it than what I'm going to say is my understanding. The state's allowing for potential unscheduled remote learning days that could count to time up to a total of 10, but those cover things including unexpected COVID closures of schools, where schools would shift if a school is closed or a school division is closed, heaven forbid, to fully virtual instruction. They haven't provided any guidance for long-term in terms of what this would look like for years in the future, but I can certainly research that.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Jessie?
Hi. We know we always kid around about the month of November. There are so many days. Did the committee address that? Is there anything that we can do in that particular area?
So November is a tricky month, and so there would not be a week. What I can say is that the options that are under consideration do not include a week like this one where there would only be two days of students in school. So there's adjustments for that made. There would be days, there'd be several weeks because of the end of the first marking period. Veterans Day and Thanksgiving still fall in the month of November, but an adjustment was made for the end of the first quarter to not have a school week like this one where you had three days off and two days of school. That was the accommodation made.
Okay. Well, Dr. Casada, I'd like to thank you. I mean, it was just one year ago we were here approving this year's calendar, which is really a new calendar for the county. And if we recall, last year, the two most popular items were the two-week holiday, Christmas break, and then the recognition and taking the days off for the other holidays. I'm glad to see that 3,700 respondents felt very similar about that, and we appreciate the options that you've given us. Last year's selection of a calendar went extremely smoothly, and I think the community was thrilled with what we did. And it seems like they are validating our work from last year again with this year's calendar. So thank you very much, school board members, and to the public. This is up for vote in two weeks, so the school board's open to taking comment by email and by online stuff through the clerk's office and at the next school board meeting as well. Thank you very much. Okay, next, we'll move on to our student representative. I have here, we have Charlotte Flynn this evening from Woodbridge Senior High School. Ms. Charlotte Flynn, take it away.
Good evening, school board members in Prince William County. I hope everyone enjoyed their holiday weekend. Tonight, I want to address the many positive outcomes of the first quarter that I have noticed in our schools. I want to highlight the efforts of the teachers and cleaning staff for keeping schools safe throughout the day. Teachers and associated staff have maintained clean classrooms and enforced COVID guidelines, successfully keeping our students in school. Thank you so much for your hard work and dedication. Your effort is very appreciated, and we are so grateful for your support. Students, congratulations on finishing the first quarter on a positive note. I know it was difficult to fall back into the routine of school, but your time and commitment to showing up every day and trying your best is noticed. Let's continue this good work into second quarter. Lastly, I want to give a special shout-out to all Prince William County teachers. Thank you for taking the time out of your planning periods to assist with subbing in other classes and helping out with the bus system and other special duties. We recognize how important this work is, especially with the bus and substitute shortage, and we are extremely grateful for your service to our students. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm so grateful for the work that our students and teachers have done, and I hope to see more of it in the future.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Flynn. Dr. McDade, superintendent's time, Dr. Latonya McDade?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. Good evening. I would like to start tonight by, again, thanking our teachers, administrators, and support staff for their hard work. Their dedication to students has ensured this year has been a success. With the end of the first quarter, report cards will be going out soon. The division's academic achievement data from the first quarter will be shared publicly during the November 16th school board meeting. I'm very proud of how we have navigated through this pandemic. Our objective at the start of this year was to provide a quality educational option for all students, ensuring that all students had the opportunity to return to in-person learning to our classrooms. We have achieved this goal. Thank you to our employees, students, and their families who continue to follow our mitigation strategies. This has not been easy and has been a challenging time for everyone, and we appreciate all of your cooperation. An update on COVID-19. Last night, the CDC approved the availability of the COVID-19 vaccine for children ages 5 to 11. The vaccine is a pathway out of the pandemic, and they are the safest measure we can take to prevent the spread of COVID-19. Families and caregivers are encouraged to consult with the medical provider regarding vaccination to determine if your child is eligible for the vaccine. As I have stated, since I was first appointed to this role, our work will be guided by core values, including a commitment to equity. A key step forward in that commitment is the creation of an equity office. I would like to announce that Dr. Lucretia N. Brown, our new chief equity officer, will join the school division officially November 15th. I look forward to working with Dr. Brown to continue to explore how we can champion and implement educational equity and an inclusive environment in our schools. Dr. Brown joins us from Allentown, Pennsylvania, where she served as Deputy Superintendent of Equity, Accountability, and School Improvement for the Allentown School District. As chief equity officer for PWCS, Dr. Brown will serve as a member of the executive cabinet and will develop and implement short- and long-term equity goals that support the division's mission, vision, and four-year strategic plan. Dr. Brown's office will also oversee our equal employment opportunity work as well as Title IX compliance. I look forward to the coherence that Dr. Brown and her office will bring to our equity focus. Lastly, I would like to acknowledge two very important days that our school division will recognize with staff and student holidays. Diwali tomorrow and Veterans Day next week. This school year is the first year we have observed Diwali, one of the major religious festivals in Hinduism, Jainism, and Sikhism, with a staff and student holiday. For Veterans Day, our schools hold a wide variety of activities to honor our veterans this time of year. In closing, on behalf of Prince William County Public Schools, I would like to share our immense gratitude to those who have served and are currently serving in the armed forces. Thank you to all the veterans and their families for their lasting contributions to our country. Mr. Chairman, this concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. McDade. We'll move on to revision of Policy 711, 1901. This is on for a first reading. Does the school board have any questions? I think this one is fairly self-explanatory. I think Ms. Heebner and Dr. McDade are here to answer if there's any questions on this, and this will also be voted on next week. And this is just to make enrollment easier, essentially, and withdrawal easier, correct? Is that right? Okay. Any questions on this for the staff? Yeah, Ms. Wall?
So I think most of our students are able to be online now with, yes, one of the byproducts of the pandemic, but there may still be situations where that's really difficult for families. Is it still possible to show up at a school and register in that fashion? Or is it, does it really, it says it will begin registration via the online registration process. Can you speak to that? And, or do we just, I guess, if they show up at the school, do we direct them to fill out the process on a computer?
Yes, Mrs. Wall, you are correct. We do recognize that for some families, it may be challenging to access online. Our school staff stands ready. If our parents are able to come to the building, we will facilitate with that online registration process. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Heebner. All right, that wraps it up. We'll move on to board matters. I think we'll start with Ms. Jessie this evening.
Thank you. Usually, on board matters, we share events that we attended. And tonight, I'd like to devote my time to share about an event I did not attend, but one that, through some communication situation, I was not there. But this particular Hall of Famer, his name is Victor A. Kahoon, and I think I have a slide. Dr. McDade and I were talking about the number of children we've lost. And this is the late Victor Kahoon. He was inducted into the Hall of Fame for Osmond Park. I came to know Victor and his family because I hired his mother, Thelma Kahoon. He passed away 18 years ago. And I would call him a triple-A type student. I'm sorry, I'm getting pretty emotional about this, but A for academics, A for athleticism, and also A for just attitude. He was an all-around athletic person. He was not just a football player. He was a track star. He did everything. When he graduated from Osmond Park, he went to Arizona State, and Arizona State was in the Rose Bowl. And because Mrs. Kahoon and I had known each other for so long, I remember, this is my first time actually observing a student in the Rose Bowl, and they won that game. He went on to play for the Washington Redskins. And sometimes in life, we leave a legacy that's greater than our life accomplishments, and only because this family has continued to support the school system. I know Mrs. Kahoon has always continued to support the school system. She worked for me as a Title IX teacher, and she also worked at Central Office. They have dedicated to the school system their time and efforts to secure and, not secure, that's not the word I want to use, to maintain the life and legacy of their son, Victor. So I want to announce that he, there is a Victor A. Kahoon Track Classic and a golf tournament where they raised fund for a scholarship in his honor to Thelma and Sam Kahoon. I, you are lifelong friends and professional acquaintances. And to Victor, I knew him when he was seven or eight, and he was just a wonderful young man, and I wanted to pay tribute to him tonight. And that ends my board matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to start by saying I appreciate the invitation from Vaughn Elementary School. I was able to attend their crime and slime event, which was a lot of fun to see. I love math and science, although not particularly, math is not my favorite subject. But it was really fun to get a chance to interact with students and parents and to see how the school took both students and parents through educational exercises and making slime, which was math-related and science-related, and then using critical thinking skills to solve a mystery crime. And then, I appreciate all the hard work by the staff, for the parents and the families that were able to come out, but especially for the follow-up that was given to parents on things that they could work on at home to develop their students' critical thinking, the extra time and energy it takes for those type of events to be put on. I don't think we give enough praise to our schools when they hold these type of events. So thank you to Vaughn Elementary School. I also want to remind parents that the specialty program applications are open. If you have any questions, please speak to your counselors. But I highly encourage everyone to at least go out and look at the multiple specialty programs that we have here in the county. They are not only academic-based, but they're CTE. I mean, there are so many, starting with middle school. There's virtually something for everyone. A lot of people talk about trades and school choice and things of that nature, but Prince William County Schools has continued to lead the way in providing a choice in academic and career and technical programs, I believe, in Northern Virginia, and it's something that we cannot talk about enough. I mean, the availability from IB to agricultural programs, to welding, cabinetry, all sorts of things. Highly encourage parents and students to go review those programs and apply. A lot of them, it's as easy as one, two, three. Some of them require more in-depth applications, but it's definitely worth checking out. I want to say how excited I am about the division hiring a chief equity officer. This is something that I've been advocating for for several years, and I'm very excited that we have someone in the position. And then, I just want to take the last few remaining seconds to say how appreciative I am of our school division for recognizing the many various cultures that are alive and well within our school division. I think with our new superintendent, I've never seen the amount of appreciation and knowledge about the differences of culture that we have here in Prince William County schools. And I think, I can safely say, not I think, but I know for a fact that it is appreciated. I've received a tremendous amount of feedback on people who now feel seen and heard because of their religion, who, their backgrounds, all sorts of things. So I just want to say thank you because it's worth saying. We are the 10th most diverse county, and our school division takes the time to recognize it, and that provides value. So thank you.
Ms. Zargarpur? We'll go to Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I want to start out with some highlights from around the Gainesville district. In sports, we have, this week, we had a Battlefield volleyball team. We're Cedar Run District champs, and last night's game was against Colonial Forge in the quarterfinals, and they won three straight games, so it was really exciting. Tomorrow, the girls' varsity field hockey team will compete in region finals, and volleyball again in semifinals. And cross-country will compete in regionals against Osborne Park. So lots of good sports happening out there. I'm really pleased that sports has been able to continue, and we haven't had to shut anything down, as far as I know. I think that's really exciting. Battlefield will square off against Patriot for the district championship on Friday, so that's going to be really exciting, as Jackson and I will go and cheer really loud for everything that happens on the field between us. Reagan Middle, I want to highlight some of our middle school sports at Reagan. Girls' track, boys' soccer and football teams all won their Western Regionals, and girls' track and football were undefeated this season, so way to go at Reagan. And I know their varsity cheer team at Battlefield is headed to States and will compete on November 6th. I also wanted to congratulate 38 students who were selected for the VMEA Honor Choir. I always love to see how music is rebounding. One of those things that's really important to me. important to me, and I think is important to the development of our students, is that they have opportunity to develop their musical and theatrical and other kinds of talents. I enjoyed seeing Unity Reed, Woodbridge Patriot Battlefield, perform at their final marching band assessment, and also was excited to see the progress in those, in that program. I want to highlight Unity Braxton Middle School. This week, the sixth and eighth grade students at Unity Braxton participated in Amazon Tech Week. Topics included an introduction to cloud computing and an introduction to artificial intelligence and machine learning. So, students were able to connect via moderated Zoom sessions with Amazon Web Service employees and participated in classroom activities focused on learning how data scientists and coders think when working with AI and working with algorithms. And so, this was a great experience and opportunity for all of our students. It was possible due to a collaborative effort between Amazon Web Services PDWCS Supervisor of Science Julia Renberg, Professional School Counseling Department at UBMS, and our business liaison Eric Simonhour. I want to give a quick shout out to PTOs and PTAs for your dedication to our teachers and schools. The breakfast cookies, notes of encouragement, cards, boxes of Kleenex, activities, fundraisers, festivals, and more, you, you really are a very important part of our school climate. In response to those who spoke about masks and mandates and other things, I hear you. I have long felt that state and federal policy has sort of lost the, lost the message a little bit and is drifting with no clear metrics in, in the end, in the end goal with the pandemic. And at this point, I feel, it's my personal feeling, that there is a badly needed adjustment at the state and federal level, and I'm looking forward to that. I hope that will make a difference for what we're trying to do. I have long felt that we have, we are over-quarantining our students. However, I do appreciate what everybody has said. Our focus is, of course, education. The educational welfare and academic performance of all students is the highest priority. That's in our Code of Ethics Number Two. And I'll end with this quote from Benjamin Franklin, who said, "An investment in knowledge pays the best interest." Thanks, everybody, and have a good night.
Adele Jackson?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. There were several resolutions on this week's agenda that I would like to take note of from Recognizing American Education Week, International Education Week, Education Support Professional Week, and Inclusive Schools Week. I just want to take a moment to thank all education support professional staff, to the first faces in the building a parent interacts with, to the last face a student sees when they get off the bus. Thank you to all secretaries, classroom aides, cafeteria workers, maintenance workers, bus aides, bus drivers, and many others that directly serve our students. Last week, I was fortunate, very fortunate, to attend the First Responders Dinner at Patriot High School. I am so grateful for all first responders and their endless commitment to our community's safety and health. I am thankful to be present for the wonderful speeches expressing gratitude, including the student body president at Patriot High School and Dr. McDade, core performances, including the ASR Club who signed the national anthem, orchestra, color guard, and the band. I am very grateful for the culinary students and Chef Stevenson for showing gratitude and love to our first responders through wonderful food. Congratulations to Dr. Jackson on his first day at the Knoxville School. And, as always, thank you to all Prince William County staff who continue to give their all during a pandemic, and to those staff members who showed up after a long day to come and talk to, about their concerns. And thank you very much to the IT staff at Prince William County Schools who always help me make sure that closed captioning is up and running so that I can participate and hear everything everybody is saying, so thank you. And thank you, of course, to the parents who came this evening, and have a great night.
Mr. Justin Wilk?
Thank you, Chairman. Dr. Latif, quick things. I do want to thank a couple of people who are on my consent agenda for the appointments. Mr. David Miles, he'll be serving on the CAC Committee. Mr. Miles is a Dumfries resident and a special needs grandparent. He will be taking a seat being vacated by Ms. Brandy Workman. I do want to thank her for her service to the committee. I do want to thank Pamela Lockridge for serving on the Equity Council. She will be filling a seat vacated by Rojan Rothenblom. Thank you, Rojan, for your service to the military and for our school system. Couple events that I went to, first, on Halloween Eve, I did not just attend, but I participated as a parent and family in the Ashland trunk-or-treat event. Over 700 students plus attended. What a great event. We dressed up as Marvel, and it was a great time, the Marvel characters with the truck. Got to go out to Patriot to watch our Forest Park Girls hockey team, field hockey team. First time, I, to be very transparent, I had watched the sport, still learning a lot, but congratulations on the Bruins for making regionals. Did attend Potomac High School's football homecoming, where I was granted the privilege to crown the homecoming king and queen. That was a great event. I was told that close to 900 kids went to Potomac's homecoming dance. It's great to see the kids are back in school, going to events. Want to recognize the Patty Elementary, which has one of the strongest PTOs I think I've ever worked with for their fall book fair. It was a great superhero theme and huge turnout from families and students. I want to thank the team and the principal for doing a safe process for having the kids come in. It reminded me a lot of like, what, like, the couple of days before Christmas before Amazon Prime came with shopping, so retail store is what used to be, but it was a good event. Also want to thank Supervisor Andrea Bailey, my esteemed counterpart on the BOCs, for having me attend her virtual town hall. Quick, you know, as the longstanding member of Safe Schools Committee, I do want to recognize that I acknowledged the parent emails and concerns about the number of increased fights in schools and behavioral issues. I've spoken to principals about it, and they've told me the numbers are up. I do understand that we did have some clearly unfortunate time out of school because of the pandemic, but as a Safe Schools member, we will work and move forward to work and support our principals with these behavioral issues. And then, finally, with my last 10 seconds, I have to mention, as a former civics teacher, I was extremely proud yesterday to get all the selfies from former students. I feel really old that they're all, they're voting now, whether it was for red, blue, or whatever color it was. I was very proud to see many of my former students exercising their student, their civic duty all the way across from Gainesville to Woodbridge. So, thank you.
Ms. Ralston?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. No, let me just pass, but I'm glad, I am glad to be back from being ill.
Fantastic. Ms. Ralston, we are thrilled to have you back and glad you're feeling better. We'll next move to Ms. Zargarpur, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I had an opportunity to go to the first awards banquet for Osborn Park High School. I am a graduate of Osborn Park, so it was really nostalgic for me to be able to sit there and listen to people, these athletes who are awarded for things that they did in times before I got to that school and a little bit after. And I was struck by a few things. First of all, I, Ms. Jessie, I went to, I was in classes with Victor Kahoon. He and I had, I think it was a math class together, and then, two years later, I went to Arizona State and ran into him at football game. So, yeah, yeah. So, it's a weird world, isn't it? I was struck by the, by the, the way that the athletes talked about how their experiences shaped them. They all had an attitude of gratitude, and they all recognized that they weren't there alone, that they had a team with them the entire time who pushed them to be better. Another thing that was a common theme was that the lessons that they learned as athletes transformed everything else in their life, from personal relationships to jobs, to college, to businesses they may be running. So, it has an impact on our lives, on our life. And I, I think that it's really important that we recognize as we're, we're getting more and more adept at moving through this pandemic, and we've got more activities that the kids are able to get into. These are lifelong experiences. They shape who we are. So, I, I think these are all excellent things, and in the spirit of an attitude of gratitude, I want to express my gratitude to all the staff who've been working so hard. And teachers, I, I have been hearing you about your time, the CLTs, the, the planning. I convey those things as much as I can to division staff, so I know, I got you. Parents, I hear you. I know you're concerned about health, and you're concerned about kids missing time maybe to quarantines and things like that. Trying to, I'm hopeful that we will be able to have like a little faster path back into classrooms. Oh, the other thing I did want to say about the, the thing at Osborn Park, what also struck me was that the people who were the coaches were there for 20, 30 years in one school. That's not something we really see anymore, and it's because the face of education has changed quite a bit. So, I want us all to think about how we're not going to wear out our teachers and our staff. I also want to give a quick mention, we did have elections yesterday, so congratulations to everyone who ran, everyone who won. Those of you who are going to Richmond, either you're representing us new or you have been there before, please remember that we're your local school board. We want to be involved in the legislation and the decisions that you all make that affect us. So, be wary of how you talk about budgets and perhaps unfunded mandates. That's my little two cents there. I'm going to yield these last 10 seconds to Ms. Williams because she didn't get a chance to mention something important.
Thank you, Ms. Zargarpur, Vice Chair Zargarpur, excuse me. I do want to say that in, from hearing the response from the public and from a parent who came, I will be hosting, with several others, a town hall on culturally responsive teaching that will take place here at the Kelly Leadership Building on November 15th at 7:00 PM. More details to follow. Thank you.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to echo Dr. McDade's statements on Veterans Day. We are thrilled to recognize our veterans and especially our students who've gone on to become veterans and folks in our community and parents. And, and as Dr. McDade points out, a lot of our schools will be having some activities around that. May Diwali burn your bad times and enter you in good times tomorrow to all of those celebrating Diwali in our community. Best wishes. Regarding our sports teams, I get to root for all of our teams, and I get to win in every match because I'm chairman-at-large. So, we have some fantastic sports teams, great fall season that is wrapping up, and some playoffs that are happening. Please get out there and follow them and go see our, our teams and, and participate in all their activities they're doing. Vaccines, I'd like to echo Dr. McDade's statements. Please check with your pediatrician, your doctor, your family physician on how best and when to vaccinate your children if you so desire. I think it's very important. It'll help us reduce quarantines. It'll help us get back to normal, and it is critical. It is a choice. The school board has not made this a mandate for any of our students at any point, and I think it's important to remind everyone, but we do highly encourage it, and we do believe it'll help us get to a place where it is the ultimate mitigation. And so, please, check with your pediatrician. Those for five to 11-year-olds will be starting to roll out, I think, as early as this Friday. Thank you to our teachers and our students. It was a rough first quarter. It's been a tough re-entry into in-person learning. It has been tough from many standpoints, and so, I congratulate all of you of getting through this first quarter. It wasn't easy. It's been tough on everyone, but we are getting there, and we continue to hear your concerns, and I can tell you that the superintendent and the staff and the school board continue to hear it, and we're working diligently to try to find solutions to the many challenges we face as a school division. Lastly, congratulations to Governor-elect Glenn Youngkin. I am excited to let everyone know that this school board will continue to work to lobby Richmond regardless of who's there and who's working in the General Assembly. On the behalf of our students here in Prince William County, we will continue to work hard to get the funds we believe we need to run a world-class education. We will work with anyone and everywhere, whether it's Richmond and here in our county, to do what we need to do for what's best for our students. And so, I commit to working with our new leadership this January as they get inaugurated. And again, thank you to all those that ran, and, and, and best wishes on a no November, no, what is it, no school November, we call it. And Ms., I'm going to go back, I'm going to give a couple of seconds here to Ms. Zargarpur. She forgot to remind people on that.
Oh, my gosh. Okay. Regardless of what you believe about the mask, wear your mask, wash your hands, keep your distance, get vaccinated if you wish, and everyone stay healthy and well.
Have a great evening, everyone. Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.